I'm sorry, what were you saying?
I'm bringing the record.
A lot of stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, um, do you have this?
Yeah.
All right. Vice Chair will read off.
So if you eight, seven o'clock, the first order of business, this is the approval of the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Second.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, the voting members tonight will be myself, Andrew, and John, just for the record. Okay, we're gonna be continuing the hearing petition of George Wilson, trustee Penn Realty Trust, one fifty-five Birch Street. Do you wanna read the?
Sure. Um, the Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on or continued hearing on March eighth, two thousand and eighteen at seven o'clock at Abington Town Hall, Town Office is five hundred Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of George Williams, trustee Penn Realty Trust, eighty Washington Street, Noel, for a finding per chapter forty-eight, section six, whether one seventy-five twenty-five-one affords protection for the development of a building lot which is over five thousand square feet and has a fifty-one feet frontage at one fifty-five Birch Street. The property is located on Assessor's Map fifty-four, lots ninety and ninety-two in the area twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Right, just hold on one second.
Yeah.
Hello again, uh, this would be the third time that we're going over this, correct? Just wanna keep them for the record. Um, go ahead, John.
I'm responding to, uh, Mr. Williams', uh, letter that he dated on March second. Uh, third paragraph, uh, number one, he was looking for an answer from counsel. Uh, I don't know where anybody on this board told him there would be a response, uh, to them. It is our privilege and that's what we have. It is counsel information for us. Number two, the last paragraph states, "I'm available anytime to meet or discuss the project with anyone and look forward to another upcoming meeting." My concern there is, I don't know where you're going with that. That could very seriously be a open meeting violation. So, I don't know where he was going with that, but that could be taken wrongly. That's it? Next, then lastly, I'd like to pass it out to the building inspector.
Um, actually, um, before, before we go, Mr. Chairman, I perhaps should, um, say one thing, um, to the meeting, um, because, uh, my name is Dennis Bergen, and in this, um, hearing, uh, there were letters from an attorney who I gather may not represent the petitioner now, but Attorney Sullivan, um, and, um, uh, my name is mentioned for three things. Uh, one is that, um, um, I, I had, uh, said that the, um, whatever the issue was void, and I didn't make a comment about that. That was in a letter from the attorney. I looked at my, the minutes and it didn't say that. Um, but the other thing is more important, it said that, um, I was in a butter. Um, so I live at seventy-one Morton Street, so I'm not in a butter to this here, the land of this land, um, in the hearing. And then the third thing is this letter, um, that, um, John mentioned from Mr. Williams. So, that was the one that gave me much pause, um, and apparently, Mr. Williams, um, went to my office and saw that one of the butters, um, Mr. Reynolds, is also, um, in the same building with me, and that's quite true. Um, um, my office is at twenty-four Jewel Road in Holbrook. There's about, um, six lawyers, maybe more than that, that get their correspondence there. And, uh, poor Mr. Reynolds was asked, he would tell you that he's in the, in the dungeons of that building, in the basement, and I'm actually upstairs. We don't actually even share a photocopier, and we're certainly not part of the same practice. It's just, I have my office in the same building as him, um, and so, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think that would make me, um, have a conflict at all. I did call the ethics department and they did have to get back to me, but just having an office in the same building as this chap who I hardly ever see, I don't think that would be a conflict, and so I would not walk away from that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so I just wanna, let's remind ourselves what we're here for. We're here for a finding, correct? Finding? Um, I, we did hear back from our lawyer, and, um, the town's lawyer said regarding one fifty-five, uh, Birch Street, basically was saying that it's not grandfathered in because you're asking for, you do not have a single, uh, let's see, what is it? Yeah, single or two-family residence is not what you're building there. So, the bottom line is that it does not apply to, um, building condos there. So, this, and she also, um, suggested that we don't even vote on this because you have to reapply with this, with, um, with the build inspector.
May I be heard?
Uh, no, not yet, not yet. Marshall, do you have anything to say?
No, uh, you've explained it pretty well. Um, she said a couple of other things, she cited some case law, and basically said, uh, it appears that there, it may be putting the cart before the horse with regards to trying to ascertain whether or not, um, the grandfathered status typically would be applying through my office, um, and I would have gotten this information and likely, uh, denied the permit, and then you would appeal to the Board of Appeals is what I was told. But, uh, that's what, uh, we've been advised, and I usually follow counsel's advice because she'd be the one defending me in court.
Andrew, anything?
No, so just to clarify, and, um, the project you're proposing is not, I mean, if you look at, um, chapter forty-eight, section six, the third paragraph where, excuse me, the fourth paragraph, it's "Any increase in area frontage width, yard or depth requirement of a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to a lot for single or two-family residential use," which is the time. So, uh, counsel's interpretation is that it's the use that's controlling, it's not the zoning of the lot that's actually controlling.
Okay. So, our, our application didn't talk about condos or anything, it talked about a finding that was after consultation with the building department. Um, I'm aware of what the building inspector says, often that's how I do it, I apply. He says, "I don't have authority to give this and I appeal to the ZBA." I thought the building inspector or the building department was trying to save us a step and said, "Why don't you get a finding and see what you can do there?" So, if you look at the application, there's no mention of condominiums or multifamily housing.
But, uh, the owner was here showing people.
Yeah, I know, the applicant, I understand the applicant was here before, before me, but I was pretty careful in the application not to include that because I was looking solely for a finding that indeed that lot is grandfather protected, and then we would deal with, um, the issue. So, that was where I was going with it.
What she's saying though, I'm, what she's saying right now is basically with your idea of putting condos in there and not telling us what you're gonna put in there, I mean, you can't, you're gonna have an application when you're not gonna tell us what you're putting in there and you're looking for a finding? So, the bottom line with that is that we know what you, what you're planning to do in there, so.
The, the project description actually says the applicant proposes to build eleven condominiums upon the premises.
I apologize, Jeff, I forgot.
It says here.
I don't have that, actually.
At least we were looking for was a finding.
I don't have a copy of that.
I think that's what counsel.
Okay, there it is, all right, thank you.
And you know what, I'm mistaken, so I actually, I drafted and forgot about it.
All right, so you, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
The, uh, she also speaks to, uh, counsel with regards to structures.
Already being.
On the land.
Yes.
And, in the application, as well as on the plan that was shown, there's a slab. In the application, I'm reading here, disturbed areas, old foundation, stair walls, et cetera, which were not related to a pre-existing use as a lumberyard, though most of the site appears to have been disturbed. So, and she speaks to, if you had it and you tore it down, it doesn't, no longer qualifies as vacant land.
Right.
Um, and that's what it says here in the application unless I'm.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it refers to lumberyard use?
It does, right here.
The application describes how the property was previously, it looks like at least portions of it were.
Yeah, Mr. Petrow.
Used for, uh, Abington lumber and that there was this disturbed area, a portion of the site had a, an old foundation, um, so, I mean, counsel's interpretation was that, unlike the case you cited, uh, in the material that you provided us, where there's actually two vacant lots that had never been used, um, it, it appears that these lots had some pre-existing purpose, which therefore they weren't vacant lots.
And counsel mentions that in her email.
Well, again, what we were looking for was a finding strictly on lot ninety-two, and, and I hear what the board is saying and counsel's advice, I would like to address something. Um, Mr. Bergen, I never referred to you as an abutter in my letter on February twenty-one. I said, "An abutter," which was, of course, Mr. Reynolds and board member, Mr. Bergen, so I just wanted to make the record clear.
Oh, okay.
So, I think that was a misreading of my letter. Um, I think Mr. Duane would also like to address an issue.
I just wanna ask a question with regard to the structures and the foundations and things like that, do any of them lie on lot ninety-two, the grandfathered lot, or are those all on the, the back pie-shaped additional lot ninety? I believe if anywhere.
I think they were in the back.
Right, so that would be.
That's the additional land, so the grandfathered lot would be lot ninety-two.
They've been co-joining, correct?
Yes. Right, okay, so when, when that was added.
I think, as it's been interpreted, that was an error.
What was an error, I'm sorry?
The co-joining, um, negated, uh, the grandfather, I believe is what counsel's saying. I know you don't wanna hear it, but that's what counsel's saying.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, I, I think there's a lot of different moving parts here, um, and I think.
I will give you grandfathered lots are very, um.
Yeah, so we originally tried to make this simpler, and I, I hear what the, what town council is apparently telling the board, that we should apply for the special permit, try to see what we can do and then go through the process. And I think when you and I were speaking about this and when you spoke to my client, we were trying to get town, whether or not this provided for it, and we were looking for a finding. I was originally just trying to get a finding on ninety-two, and I, I didn't deal with the backland because I was aware of this Leroy case and I thought everybody would be in agreement, that that didn't cause me to lose my grandfather protection. It sounds like town council may not be of that same opinion, uh, but that, that's my reading of that case.
I agree, she does not agree with you.
I agree with that too.
Do you, um, and Mr. Chairman, do you think that, um, counsel should get a copy of, is that done?
Uh, no, that's, that's our information.
Because just, you know, the, the counsel did actually talk about the Leroy case, um, and said that that deals with.
That's where she cited it from, I mean, that's.
But she did, because you specifically talked about Leroy case, so she's, looked at the Leroy case, she saw that was residential, and also it involved, um, a land that didn't have a structure. And then, without wanting to, um, beat, um, a dead thing, in your letter of February twenty-first, you talk about the abutters, Sean Riley and board member Dennis Bergen.
I know, it should be Sean Reynolds, obviously, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering that too myself.
Yeah, so, but you do call me an abutter.
I don't remember seeing that.
I think, well, okay, I think it must be King's English we're arguing over here, abutter Sean Reynolds and board member Dennis Bergen.
All right, all right, it doesn't matter.
So, so here we, here we stand, okay? Again, it's a finding, um, our lawyer says, "No, reapply." To the building inspector.
So, we hear, we've heard what the board says.
Okay, so you have.
They can, uh, you can make your decision, they can withdraw without prejudice?
Right. I mean.
Or we continue.
Or you get, uh, we can continue, we could, you could withdraw, or we go forward?
Could we continue so we can file for the special permit?
Oh, we can continue. I mean, what was the date on this? You're running out of time here, so they either withdraw or make a decision on this.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, how, how many months has this been going on?
This is the fourth time that we've done this, I mean.
I think with an agreement between both parties, it can continue, isn't that how they?
He's gonna have to amend.
No, he has to start all over because he's reintroducing the special permits.
Oh, this, uh.
And then you're gonna have to.
You can't withdraw, and you can't, you can't, uh.
Change.
Continue and then come back with something else.
Change lanes.
No. It's either withdraw.
Or we vote.
Or you vote on the petition.
It's either draw, withdraw or vote because I don't see how we can continue this if you're gonna be looking for a special permit. You have to start all over again.
What's the, what's the board's pleasure? What's the, what's the board's pleasure?
We have no pleasure, it's, it's up to you. Uh, again, we could vote on it tonight, I mean, it's, you're, you're asking for our opinion and, um, basically we have already given you what our lawyer said, so what do you think we're gonna vote? I mean, we're gonna go with what our lawyer said, so.
Well, it's, it's a little, it's difficult, an awful lot of preparation and research that goes into it, and then the night of the meeting without any foreknowledge is the opinion of counsel.
Well, that's our privilege, we, we got the, you have, you get.
Yeah.
Information from your counsel, we get information from our counsel.
Oh, we shared our, I shared mine with the board, and I, I, we, I assumed there was a dialogue.
Be honest with you, I just got it yesterday, so, um, we.
And, I mean, frankly, we can't have like a behind-the-scenes dialogue.
Everything has to be done in the meeting.
Yes, be.
And be meeting behind closed doors.
Yes, everything or an open meeting violation, and that's.
So, they need to either.
Yep.
Have you vote on the petition or withdraw now.
So, town council's letter, will that be read into the record at some point, or will that be a public document, or is it not?
That would not be a public document.
No.
And would, and, uh, will our letters be read into the record and?
You submitted them as part of your application, so they're, they're part of the record.
Well, it seems like it should, is it protocol to withdraw, is that, and then reapply, is that the process?
Exactly.
That's what probably be.
And, but the initial inquiry was to your department, and you told us to go this route, and now I think we've been told to go back, together, to start over again with you again, is that?
Well, you were looking for a finding, we did find a finding, we, we, we got our answer from, from our lawyer.
Yeah.
The town's lawyer. So, you did get what we.
That's our finding.
There's a finding. Do you want us to vote on it? I mean, do you really want us to vote on it, or?
Uh, no, I respectfully request to withdraw my application.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, okay. All right. And, you know, we do know how we stand and where we stand on this, so.
We do.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. They vote on.
I made a motion.
Hold on one second, yep.
We have to make a motion here that we, uh, accept their withdrawal without prejudice based on information submitted by town council. By town council. And, as we witness.
One second. All in favor? Aye. Passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
There'll be notifications.
There will be notifications if they go ahead.
There'll be, uh, they'll be applying to my office. You make application to my office.
Is that, is that poor Sullivan? Is that poor Sullivan the guy who talked to me? I thought he was calm. Yeah. I feel terrible, I feel terrible, I said that, I thought he was calm, but, yeah. It's, you know, it's a pity, she actually used exactly the same information as he did, the same section and the same case law, but she read it. I mean, I read the thing too, and it talks about residential, doesn't talk about, yeah, and that was my old teacher, Judge Fenton.
It's one or two films. And I think what he was thinking about doing was putting a little house on that little area and then using James Street to come in for eleven condos. I, because that's the only thing I could, other than that, I don't know what he was doing. Not that it's any of my business.
No, no.
He applied for a finding for a grandfathered lot, which he's not, it's, uh, if he comes and gonna deny it, then he'd have to come to you to appeal it, and then he'd have to take it. If you upheld mine, he would, would take it to court. And try and have your old professor's case law overturned, but I don't see that happening.
And fairness, we did do that, um, I think a leashing before he came, we did, we did do that with two empty places of land.
Yeah.
So, are you ready for this one, John?
Is it your stuff?
That is my old stuff.
No, I got it right here.
Yes, the guy on the left.
No.
Oh, really? I know the place. Oh, you can choose the names if you're trying to. Well, you promised me.
Okay, let's see. It being seven twenty? Vice Chair will read off the next petition.
The Town of Abington zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March eighth, two thousand and eighteen at seven oh five P.M. at Town Hall, five hundred Glenwood's Way, Abington, on the petition of seven fourteen Bedford Street Realty Trust, uh, SO, seven fourteen Bedford Street LLC, two Tiffany Lane, Rockland, for a special permit under one seventy-five twenty-one eight-four for a multi-use residential dwelling in a highway commercial zone, and a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five to construct from floodplains and wetlands protection overlay district at seven fourteen Bedford Street. The property is located on Assessor's Plan forty-six, lot six.
Just, 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 just. I'm writing, as in a butter, and I supported this project, the plan of eleven condos on two acres, um, of land, for more than adequate green space, will be a major improvement for what now exists. We hope the ZBA supports the project. Okay.
Good evening, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, five hundred Washington Street in Abington. I am here representing the applicant, and just for clarification purposes, you referenced that SO and then the notice, subsequent owner, the current owner, it's the way the Assessor's has it listed, the current owner is seven fourteen Bedford Street LLC. With me tonight is Mr. Jack Resendin, sitting with me here at the table, and Mr. Sean Keys, um, who are involved with the project. Jack is a designer and construction, and involved with the construction of the property, as Sean is also, uh, one of the, um, partners and construction managers for the, for the project. For the record, as the board is aware, we were here in front of you a number of months ago with a different, uh, different proposal, um, that was not supported by the board. Pursuant to the statute, um, we did return, excuse me, returned to the planning board to get their vote of consent to allow us to come back with a different proposal, I believe that's in the record.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, just, so that is.
Do you want to read that off, or, or is it okay?
I think if it's in the record, it's fine with, with me.
It's right here, yes, you have it.
And, under that same statute, was, which is chapter forty-eight, section sixteen, if the board was, would be inclined to approve the two special permits tonight, part of the decision would have to include these, your findings on what the specific material changes were from the old plan to the new plan. We can talk about that as, as we go through the proposal. I think you have the plan in front of you, and we do have one posted. I thought it was on fire, completely was going to be here tonight, and I'm not sure what happened to him, I called him earlier. And, help you. For the record, again, Mr. [inaudible]. If you don't mind, I'm gonna read it out, you can read along or just listen in. The petitioners have submitted a proposed plan to replace the existing, I'm sorry, yeah? Regarding seven fourteen Bedford Street, the petitioners have submitted a proposed plan to replace the existing building at the front of the property with one new building in the same approximate location. A previous plan proposed more than one building on this lot contained both residential commercial uses and was not supported by the board. This new plan is intended to address some of those comments and concerns which were brought to light at our previous hearing. Property contains ninety thousand fifty-six square feet, which is about two point oh seven acres, and within the highway commercial zone. The new plan shows our proposal to construct a single two-story residential building. Unlike the existing building, the new building will conform to all front, side, and rear yard setbacks. The existing building is only eighteen feet off the street line at Bedford Street. The proposed building, which contains eleven dwelling units, will be forty-one feet off the street line, and thus sightlines for existing vehicles will be improved. The proposed use of the property is allowed by special permit per one seventy-five twenty-one eight-four. The current layout and design of the property, which contains a large paved parking area in the rear of the lot, will continue to be utilized. However, the rear parking lot will be improved with new pavement, and the pavement line will be pulled further away from the residential abutters, Mr. Doughty and Mr. Mrs. Adams to the south. The existing parking spaces are presently about five feet from the south lot, that south lot line, but the new parking lot will be pulled between twenty-five and sixty feet off of the property line, and will now be buffered by a solid fence and planted trees and bushes. Pursuant to some of the previous comments, no buildings will now be constructed in the rear portion of the property. A small portion of the rear parking lot lies within the floodplain and wetlands protection overlay district, and thus section one seventy-five thirty-five requires a special permit to be issued to allow the parking lot improvements to be undertaken in that rear portion of the parking lot, which is actually the western edge of our property shown on the plan. No wetlands are being filled or altered as part of this project, no portion of the property is located within a FEMA flood zone. The property has an existing drainage system, although the parking lot and building area are not subject to seasonal or periodic flooding, it's found in zone X of the FEMA flood maps. A new stormwater management system or drainage system will be installed on this property and will be updated to comply with all of the current stormwater regulations. Under existing conditions, rainwater flows to the northern part of the property and into the existing retention basin, which is shown on the plan. We'll be installing an up-to-date Kef basins and underground drainage pipes in the new parking lot in order to collect and clean all rainwater from the parking lot and to allow it to continue to flow to the northern part of our property. The existing retention basin will be cleaned and brought into compliance with current stormwater management design standards, the project will not increase the amount or change the direction of any stormwater runoff. The result of these drainage improvements will be to better collect, control, and clean stormwater on our property, which will benefit the residents of our property and the health of the wetlands found in the far northern portion of our property. Those are some of the things that are required in order to approve the special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five. There's a mix of multifamily uses and single-family uses, small office uses, other commercial uses in the immediate surrounding area. The owner proposes to construct a new building with attractive landscaping and a parking area setback from view from the street. We believe it will be improvement to the property and to the general streetscape, street, streetscape of this area of town. Respectfully request of the zoning board vote to approve the requested special permits so that we may proceed to site plan review with the planning board and with a notice of intent to the conservation commission. Pursuant to that, and just to kind of, kind of, uh, document your records, I wanted to submit two things in particular. The first, well, the first is a copy of the, it will be Assessor's plan of that immediate area, and it does show some of the nearby, shows some of, try not to trip over the microphone line, some of the, uh, nearby uses, um, which, as I think if you're familiar with the property, pretty much across the street is that eighteen-year apartment building on the corner of Shaw Avenue, there's a commercial office, uh, to our south, there's mixed use to our north, there are some one families across the street, and there's the liquor store, there's also a twenty-four-year apartment building on the other side of Shaw Avenue, and behind us through some extensive wetlands on their property is the Housing Authority, which has sixty-eight apartments. So, what we're proposing here is certainly, um, not something new to this area. Additionally, just for the record, um, this is a copy of the FEMA flood maps in this area. This confirms that this is not in a FEMA flood zone. In fact, it's in a zone of what they call zone X, area of minimal flood hazard, which basically is great news, it is not subject to periodic or seasonal flooding, um, which is, again, something that is required under section one seventy-five thirty-five.
Where, where is this located, I'm sorry?
Yeah, right in the center, you see the dot?
Yeah, okay, I see it.
And if you can see the round parking. And if you can see the round parking, bay parking area, that's our property there.
Thank you.
Right where the word "town" is, is the top of our parking area. So it is not in a FEMA flood zone, it is not, it is in Zone X. Uh, we don't have any flooding issues on our property. The river that's out past, to be honest, is actually not on our property, it's on the Housing Authority property. We had talked before, I met with, um, Mr. and Mrs. Adams, uh, before our previous hearing, and, uh, she had concerns about some of the fallen trees and stuff that may have clogged the river, and we had offered to go out there and clean up any debris. We can't get that permission from the zoning board, we can get it from the conservation commission, although I did hear that the DPW had been out there relatively recently cleaning up some, but if they haven't done enough, we'll go out there and do whatever has to be done. So tonight, there are no variances being requested from this board. The building complies in all ways with variances. Um, it's a special permit for the use, which is multifamily and highway commercial zone. We're not overloading sewer, we would be going to the water board for, for permission. Um, it's a, it's a state highway, so we're not creating traffic problems, we're actually improving sightlines. The floodplain issue is, really only pertains to the small portion of the parking lot in the rear, and as you can see from, hopefully from the plan, uh, that John Carter submitted, let me point it out to you. This is the building, which basically is the same location as the current building, out of the front, the parking lot in the rear, and this blue line, everything west or on top of the blue line is in that special floodplain area. The whole work we're doing in that special, sorry, the floodplain, wetlands protection overlay district, the local district, is repaving the parking area here and doing that grading, basically it's the same grading as it is now, we would just be resecuring everything. Everything else is not in the floodplain area at all. The water continues to flow, or currently existing flows in this direction, northbound into our retention pond, and it goes into and feeds the wetlands. That will not change, we're not allowed to have that change, you can't stop the wetlands. We're just going to improve it by putting in new catch basins that actually clean the water before it gets into the wetlands. So I would submit to you that we, we performed to all the requirements of 175-35. We have listened to what the board and the neighbors had to say, and our, with our last plan, um, by not putting a building out into the rear, and essentially reworking what already is there. I hope you, um, prefer this plan, and will approve this plan. If you do have any questions, of course, Jack is here and Sean's here with me, and we take any questions we can, and I hope you will approve the special permits as laid out for me.
Okay. Anything else, no?
Uh, yeah, but I'm open to any questions.
I mean, this is, this is zone for highway commercial, correct?
Right, there's, the zoning line is shown on the plan. The zoning line is right across here. This small strip in the rear, which is closest to the river, is actually in a residential zone, the half-thirty zone, but under the terms of our bylaw, if the majority of your lot is in one zone, you can move the, the lot fifty feet. We're not actually doing any work in that area anyhow. It doesn't affect, all of the construction is in the highway commercial zone.
Well, I, I went over there and I, I did walk the property, and it took me a good twenty minutes to get out onto eighteen, it was amazing how the traffic flows there, nobody seems to notice, uh, you're waiting to get out of that property, that's for sure.
We'll be eliminating one driveway also, so that everything will be coming out of only, entering and exiting only the one driveway. Pulling up all the pavement, right now there's the driveway that comes, if you're looking at the existing, there's a driveway to the right of the building, there's a driveway to the left of the building. The driveway on the left side is being taken out, and that would be all lawn area, landscape area. All this area here, as I mentioned before, up to about thirty feet of the property line, that's being taken away, and we paved, again, the closest parking space is about twenty-five feet from the lot line, these are about sixty feet from the lot line.
How close are you to the, the building, the house that's to the left?
We're actually, our proposed building is farther away, to, I'm sorry, to the left, this way over here?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, to the right, I apologize, to the right.
The, we are farther away than the existing building.
Oh.
I think if you look on the plane, you can see the two images of the proposed building and the ghosted image of the existing building.
There's, uh, there's, okay.
See that?
And now this building here, how close is this building, Tom's, uh, house?
Well, I have a, uh, actually, I can show you the right here.
Is it on?
There's a lawn area between, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Lawn area between that building and our view.
So that's 714 Bedford Street, correct? So, let me just see how that looks.
So...
Wait, 714 is your property?
Yes. No, that...
Okay, okay, yeah, I was gonna say that.
This parking, this driveway parking area will be removed. This will be the only driveway entrance exit.
How much room are you leaving between that, that building right there and, and your, your entrance?
Oh, but you're moving the building because this is being removed.
You're moving it how long, how far again? I'm just curious to see how close the neighbors are gonna be.
The lot line's forty-three feet, seven on the front end, forty-two feet.
Yeah, I would say, it looks like it's about another ten-foot increase.
Yeah.
Right now, the building, the existing building appears to be approximately thirty feet off the lot line. Our building will be forty-two feet off the lot line. Required to be a minimum of...
Forty-two, and then the, the driveway itself will be...
Thirty feet wide.
Right there, thirty. Well, it's kinda tight, the lot line, I would say.
Didn't this, have the, um, have you spoken to the Scopa Lettys at all, they, about the project, or they...
No, some of these buildings on that side of the street are, if you drop by, kind of a mix of residential and landscaping business there. Um, I don't think...
That's, that's not a residential.
I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, I think someone does live there, but I think it's...
Yeah, it is kind of a mess in the back, you know?
Um, and so it's gonna be six units? Do you have a vision of how many bedrooms in each, or anything like that?
Eleven units.
I thought it was six units.
No, eleven.
No, eleven units would be...
That's just showing you six, six on the bottom.
Oh, I get it.
And then what, another five on the top?
There would be nine two-unit buildings, one three-unit, and one one...
Yes, and on number eleven?
Yeah, that's part of our, uh, I think our zoning bylaw. If you go twelve or more, different regulations apply, that's why, uh, a lot of people will go eleven or ten or whatever.
Just so I understand, if I can make a comment here, since I'm in on the board, highway commercial is still, I understand that most of these houses have already existed prior. Liquor store is new, so that's a new business, that was a, uh, restaurant, but it wasn't over there. The commercial office, uh, that is relatively new, used to go there. So now we're gonna be losing a commercial use, and we're gonna be gaining more housing. And again, under highway commercial, the district's intent is to primarily provide locations for businesses which cater to a traffic-oriented market, or which need larger expanses of land, and would not be appropriate to compact general commercial centers. So I'm just seeing, we're getting away from what the intent is.
The highway commercial district allows some businesses, as it writes, some businesses by special permit, and it allows multifamily by special permit. The reason for that is, is the highway commercial zones are located on the highways, State Highway eighteen, State Highway one twenty-three, um, because those are designed for larger traffic volumes. Um, that's why we wanna have multifamilies on the highways, and not multifamilies in a subdivision or on a side street. And that's where, again, we demonstrated that there, there is a multifamily across the street, there's a multifamily on the other side of Shar Avenue, um, Lincoln Village is on, on, uh, Route eighteen, if you keep going up and down, you'll, you'll see more. It's unfortunately, well fortunately, I mean, it is an attractive use, it's a, it's a convenient place for some people to live, if they just wanna have a condominium and get on the highway and go to where their place of employment is.
But there are no condominiums in that general area, am I correct?
Well, condominiums and apartments are all approved in the same manner, it's a multi-dwelling use, whether they rent them or sell them, it's the same design and the same permitting procedure, so, um, it, there's no difference to it under their zoning bylaw, it's a special permit either way you go. If, if, uh, an owner can decide to build six units, ten units, and rent them, and then he could decide later to sell them if he wanted.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Just go right ahead, please.
Thank you, so, so devoting members, um, the threshold for devoting members in chapter forty-eight, section nine, on special permits, um, the section that governs this, I see, says zoning ordinances or bylaws might, may provide that special permits may be granted for multifamily residential use in non-residentially zoned areas where the public good would be served, and after a finding by the special permit granting authority, that such non-residential zoned area would not adversely affect, affected by such a residential use, and that the permitted uses in such a zone are not noxious to a multifamily use. So, there's kind of a two-prong here in, in, um, the facts that we have before us. Uh, one is, as John mentioned, um, that this is highway commercial, and I seem to remember when you came before with, um, um, a plan similar to this, that was one of the things that you fell out, was we were saying, well, it's a commercial area, and really should be commercial work. And here, there's no commercial at all in your plan, right?
Right, our prior plan had a commercial building and residential buildings.
Which I thought was good, yeah.
Well, the majority of the board didn't.
Yeah.
Um, so they were concerned about the mixed use, they were concerned about more than one building of a lot, so we went back to the drawing board and now have a single, one use, residential use, the commercial use is just not, not something that's immediately viable here, um...
Because of the, because of the way the lot is done, is cut out.
Yeah, and, and it just, I mean, it has...
It's not a variance, so, I mean, he's asked for special permits.
Right, so it's...
We still go with it that way, not, not the way of the law.
I suppose that the second, the second prong, um, is what you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is the safety issue of coming out onto the highway.
Yes.
I, you know, I think it's a very valid issue.
I, I think you're gonna have that issue no matter what you build here, if you were to build a commercial building, you're gonna have customers coming in and out on the highway. Probably gonna have more traffic.
Actually, yes and no, I, it depends where you work. A good one is Harbor One. I mean, Harbor One, I go there, and for some reasons, I don't have a problem getting in. I have a little problem getting out. Where I live is a condo, it is, God forbid, to try to get out. You have to take a right, take a left, down Lincoln Boulevard, and circle back to come in by trukey. It is horrible, so anybody tells me I'm wrong, I've lived there thirty, since day one, thirty-six years ago. And number two, that I really have a hard time understanding, is my house, the first unit, all seven got water right now, it is inundated. We were told from day one, don't worry about water, it flows this way, that way. Guess what, we're flooded. My rock, my house is still being flooded today. It is running, we can't stop it. We got experts coming in, but they said we basically have to wait for the water table to go down. So I'm very concerned with the abutters, as far as the water, and the people that moved in.
Well, with all due respect, what might be happening off this property isn't really relevant to this property.
Well, yeah, it flows down in that direction.
It, it does, and as I mentioned in my...
Close to those wetlands.
As I mentioned in my presentation, as the plan shows, the water currently flows northbound.
Yep.
It flows from the Doughty, from the Adams property, in this direction. We don't actually get water from the Doughty property, because his is lower than ours, but the water that comes on our property, on our pavement out back, moves to the south, you can see the topography on the plan, right now it's graded to the, I'm sorry, to the north. It grades to the north, it goes into the retention pond as it's designed to do. That will not change. The proposed topography, and if, if you, I can help you out here, if you look on the plan... The solid lines are the proposed new grades, hundred and twenty feet, hundred and nineteen, hundred and eighteen, so it shows that the water's sloping that way, that the parking lot slopes that way. The dotted lines show the existing, which also is sloping that way, towards retention pond. We're putting in catch basins and a, and a new drainage system, so it'll actually be better than it is now, but all that water will be flowing this way. Additionally, for the board, for the neighbors, beyond the zoning board, we have to go to site plan and review, to the planning board, the, the town's engineer will review the entire drainage system, and if it, the drainage system does not have that water flow away from neighbors, or into that retention pond, they cannot approve it. We have to conform to current stormwater management guidelines, so I'm a hundred percent confident that the water will not cause any problems, uh, with our abutters to the south. It will, it's all contained in our property, and actually feeds wetlands that are on our property, it's an unused area on the northern part of our property. Again, and it's not in a FEMA flood zone, we don't have flooding issues on this property.
Marshall, is anything, or we're just gonna open the floor?
I think you should open it to the floor first.
All right, um, open it to the floor, we're all set, right? Okay, open it to the floor. Go right ahead, name, name and where you live.
I'm Thomas House, I'm in Bedford Street, I'm next door. Hey, one thing, you're sending the notices to my ex in Rockland, I've lived in Abington for five years, and they're residents, this is the first, uh, for a...
You wanna take a note of that? Oh, it's the assessor's office, oh!
Well, they've been sending me my tax bills, a lot of this, I don't know where it got lost over here.
I know, interesting, huh?
Yeah, so I have questions now.
You can call the assessor's office too.
Well, I, I have talked to them.
Oh, really, wow.
We go by their list.
Yeah, that's how we...
I have talked to them, the D's been changed to my name, so, I don't know where this is going, but... When you're putting that new driveway in on the right side, are you filling? Cause that's down in the hole right now.
Yeah, the proposal... Right now, it, it flows kind of down from the street, goes to the back.
No, it goes down and then back.
Right, exactly, we're putting a catch basin in there.
You get down that low?
No, no, I think it'll, it will be graded, um, this will be in a more... We have to go through the, the, um, the, the plan of engineering level, they'll review the entire drainage system and all the topography, but it appears to me, I'm just trying to read the plan as you're talking, that it, it shows how it slopes down and would go up normally, as it does now, as it existing. It would continue to slope, and we have catch basins on each side of the, of the driveway.
The issue I have now is, I know the Dempsey's are a business that was there before, buildings would flood every once in a while from the amount of rain in that area my yard fills, and it's at a point where if you fill that, you may be pushing it into my basement. I already get some water, I don't want more.
If I can show you. Go right ahead.
This is the driveway, and it goes down, as you said, it's the two catch basins, which will be at the bottom of the slope, to catch the water, and then a pipe of underground to head down. So there is nothing, any direct collects there now?
And my, my concern is, I keep filling this area, from street to the back, it's probably probably eight, ten feet.
No, there's still gonna be a slope down, I, is, if it's going to be tempered, it might be tempered, but it's still sloping down, because we need to get the water.
Whatever drainage system is in there now, it's failed.
Yeah, it's not.
And it's filling my yard, and every time, like this last storm, it was just about in my back lawn. Yeah, there's an old...
It was approved when they took the zoning board meeting for the main, for that building, when they put that parking lot.
Oh geez, how long ago is that?
It was eighteen years ago, I'm gonna speak to that as well.
Yeah, okay. Um, where, where are you located, right, right to the right of...
Yeah, he's the gentleman you were just asking.
Oh, the one we were just talking about, okay, thank you, sir, thank you.
I've been cleaning that up recently.
Oh, really? Um, yeah, um, is that it?
I can't remember what I've...
I'll come back to you if you remember, okay? Um, next, Liam?
Okay, um, yeah, I'm concerned with this...
Just the name in the red text.
I'm sorry, Chris Doughty, I'm at fifty-three Shar Avenue.
Okay.
I bought it from the side, so to speak.
Yep.
Uh, they're kind of moving their building a little bit, cultured by the house. So anyhow, um... Dennis, is it Dennis?
Yep.
You asked a question, um, at the last zoning board meeting, uh, anyhow, it, it referred to a concrete pad up behind the parking lot, and they didn't know what you were talking about, and they answered it, and I watched the video, um, and they answered it, it was the parking lot, and then you kind of took that as an answer, cause, just, just because you wanted to get the meat, you kind of go. And I said to myself, you know, this board here doesn't really know anything about this property, and the history of this property. They talk about this broad-shaped lot they can't do anything with, it's not commercially viable. Well, when I bought my house in two thousand, I bought it from an estate of Hazel Clough, uh, the attorney for this estate was Jack Riley, and we bought the house, and the reason I went by it, I listened to the video so many times, because we went to the... to the planning board, and an issue of credibility was brought up at the planning board by me for how many times he lied to you at the last zoning board meeting. And I'll show you the video, we'll count those lies if you like. Anyhow, he kind of turned around to me, and I said something to Leanne, and she goes, you know, watch that zoning board meeting on YouTube. So when I watched the planning board meeting on YouTube, you asked me the question about the cement platform. And I said, jeez, these guys don't know anything about this land. This whole big posse, five acres, was owned by Hazel Clark. I live in her house at 53 Shaw Rad. After closing, Mr. Riley said, hey, Chris, you've set up a new house, it's a great house. I said, I am and I'm not. He said, what do you mean? I said, if I got to this party a little earlier, I could have walked the whole five acres. He goes, well, you know, what would you want then? I said, five acres of Santa Abington, I'll be looking like a king, it has some site control in it, you know? He said, well, don't worry about it, because the lot next door got bought by a builder, he's going to build a high-end house, this would do nothing but appreciate the value of your land. And he said, my buddy owns a building called Lampworks. He's down at the Dempseys. We're going to get a parking lot approved out back. It'll be all set, we'll get this lot approved, that's a beautiful building, don't worry about a thing. You have a parking lot, a beautiful building, the town will never tear that down, it'll be a viable business, a beautiful house next door, you've got acre land in it, you're all set. And for eighteen years, it's been just that way, all set. And this guy buys the property, who hasn't been in a meeting yet for some reason, buys the property, wants to build condos immediately. When I asked them about it, they said, oh, we tried to rent it. I said, you bought it June 20th, 2017, you filed paperwork July 17th, 2017, to tear it down and build a bunch of condos out back. When did you try to rent it? And say, well, we tried to rent it, we couldn't rent it. No sign out front, no posting for rental, but they tried to rent it. And this guy rents property, he rents property in a court bar, that's what he does for a living. He rents commercial real estate. He tried to rent that, but couldn't rent it in 24 days. And now they're going to build a bunch of condos behind my house, they're going to depreciate the value of my house by about 14% from many studies. Same thing with Leanne, 14% on her house. I talked to Mr. DeJusper, who wrote that letter. I said, Tom, what's my house worth? He says, 500 grand. 14%, $70,000. He comes in here, tells you guys a bunch of lies, and now he's up here trying to pitch this project, and I'm the bad guy pointing out the fact that he lied. And he turned on me down to the planning board meeting. This is not the project right here they showed the planning board, when they got permission to come back in front of the planning board. I'm not sure if that's important or not, but I think it would be. It's kind of a little bait switch. They went to the planning board with another project, with old buildings somewhere else, and then they said, okay, we can go forward with it. And they come in here with another project. Doesn't sound right. Now, I'm concerned with, and that building is commercially viable. There was a furniture store on there, there was a hair salon in there, and there was a partner there that had three incomes, doing just fine, no problems. He said there was no activity, and it was vacant for a number of years. There was plenty of activity. I lived right behind it. I own a property right behind it. I watched people come and go all the time. There was plenty of viability in that building. And his father told me, you're all set, they'll never tear that building down, it's a viable property. He came in front of the zoning board and said, hey, we got a great plan for the town. And I sat here and listened to that meeting. See, after I was here, I said, geez, I got this notice in the mail, I thought you'd come up here. I'm only going to the one on the meeting, that meeting. And here I am, now I'm being told that the building's not viable. It's a white elephant. All this other stuff, you know?
We appreciate you coming over. I mean, you are one of the closest neighbors.
Right.
So, I mean, getting information about the histories is interesting. And we do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Leanne?
Well, if you were to go ahead, I guess I had a few questions about what happened.
I'm sorry, Leanne, you want to say your address? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's 53 Shaw Rad.
Thank you.
I did have some questions and comments of things that we would hope to happen to property if they go ahead. I guess one of the biggest against me, when the town people, you know, they called it highway commercial, what was the intent, what was the plan for that? And if that was-
A business. Yeah, a business.
I said it earlier, the intent.
And that was-
Right.
Anything else? Anybody else, anything? Nothing? Okay, let's return it to the board.
Did you have any question on that property?
I didn't see coverage.
Yeah, because it seems like-
It's not handled by the zoning board, it would be handled by the planning board. The zoning board only handles one to two families. Zoning board would have to do the flood plain.
It is the same plan that you-
I am, I would be concerned with it for a building purpose.
John mentions in the-
How close are you? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, very close. John mentioned in the environmental impact statement that there's a minimal increase in lot coverage.
Yeah, I don't know what it's, I don't know what percentage you're at, that's all.
It seems like it's a lot.
No.
You drop one condo only.
We're removing pavement. Close to the board. Back to the boards.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think I should have a right to respond to some of the-
You do. No, I just closed it to the floor at the moment, so he raises his hand. I thought you were still talking to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have something you want to say?
Actually, no, I was just saying, coverage is a-
Yeah.
We were talking about coverage, yeah.
Yeah. In the EIS, it mentions it. It is not, it's not a permit that we have to get through the zoning board. So I don't have that number here, I don't have the drainage council.
I just looked, look.
Yeah. We are, again, the footprint of the building is slightly larger, but the amount of pavement that's coming out almost is a one.
Depending on if you take, yeah, the footprint of the building is large.
There's, let me address, I'm not going to address the personal stuff. I'll leave that behind us. That was at a prior hearing. This is a brand-new hearing, ab initio, we start with the ones in front of us. I have to dispute the 14% depreciation. There's no evidence in front of you about that, and you can't just make a statement without providing evidence. The board can't rely on that statement. This case law that says that. He might, it might be what he believes, but he has to demonstrate that to the board in order to rely on it. We have conformed to all the requirements of special permit. The fact in the definition of highway commercial, the way as it was read, doesn't prohibit multifamily use. The zoning bylaw allows it by special permit. It allows other businesses by special permit, some without a special permit. So you can't read that bylaw or the definition to say that multifamily houses are not allowed in highway commercial. That's simply not true. And there are highway commercial, I'm sorry, multifamily housing up and down Route 18, and we've demonstrated that they're very close by to us also.
I read it in-
Yeah. The flood plain issue, I think, is a non-issue. We've complied, and it's only addressing the rear part of the parking lot. That's the only issue with the flood plain. And that contour, putting in drainage out there is only going to improve the situation. Certainly, there's no demonstration there that there's any sort of flooding that we're creating upstream. That's where the water's going upstream. There's no demonstration, it's all being contained on our property. It's being improved, and it's being cleaned. That satisfies Set 17535 undoubtedly. The special permit for the use, this is a use allowed by special permit. It is a good location. We did move the building, one of the concerns of the abutis, and it was a valid concern, is they didn't want to have the building out back, because that's what they would see out the back windows. This building is essentially where the current building already is. It's currently, it's where the current building already is, except now we conform to set it. Yes, it moves slightly backward, because that's what the bylaw requires, to get 40 feet off the front line. To move it forward, we'd need a variance, and we're not asking for that variance. We also, by removing the pavement along that southerly property line, allows us to put in more landscaping, more trees, more shrubbery. At the site plan hearing with the planning board, we have to file a full-blown landscaping plan to document what type of trees, what number of trees, and the location of trees are going to be located. We have to document the type of sight lighting we use to show that it's all dark-sky compliant and that it won't cause light trespass, or they can't approve it. We also have to erect a six-foot-tall solid fence in addition to the trees. So we have tried to take care of our neighbors. We want this to be an attractive place for people to live. And Mr. Gordon, who is the owner, does build quality property. There's nothing that's been before this board to give you right to justify denial of the special permit, in my opinion. Yes, Route 18 has traffic, but that's why businesses and multifamily are moved on to Route 18. That's not a reason to deny that it's harder to pull in and out, pull out, because, as one of the board members said, even if it was commercial, you're going to have traffic, if not more traffic, coming out. So I would humbly and respectfully request that the special permits, we have given you the paperwork and the backup that you need, this complies with everything in our bylaw to allow us to be granted the special permit under both 2184 and 35.
Okay. Just one question, just because it was raised, this was the same plan that you went to the planning board?
No, we went to the planning board, we had the residential use only. And we had, I think, what did we have? We had a, we had a building out back, building out front, and we said, you know, we didn't know what the final product was going to be, but we said it's going to residential use only.
Two buildings out back.
Two buildings, yeah.
Okay, or no building out front?
There was no building out front?
No.
I don't recall. We've had many iterations of this, because we're trying to address some of the issues.
But if they went forward-
So the plan before the planning board, they've written to us to relook-
When he's talking about us going to the planning board, the only thing we've been in the planning board was for consent to return to the zoning board.
Right.
Show them a diagram, explain to them why it should be there.
Yes.
With that diagram, and why it was proper to have those buildings in that spot.
Those are the bills in the back of-
And now we've got a building on the way out.
Okay.
Well, it is not, okay.
Okay, all right, let's talk into this.
Can I just say something, just to address that, because this is what I learned, is to get in front of you guys again to propose this project, we had to be denied by the zoning board. To go back in front of the zoning board, we had to get denied by the planning board. And to get denied, to go in front of the planning board, we had to come up with a concept. And the concept was to be different entirely from the other presentation we sent you. The whole other-
But what you're presenting to us now shouldn't be different that you approached your planning board with. The bottom line is, our attorney said that, and you know this, that you can't come back with the same plan, that it's just a little different.
Right.
Repetitive petitions, it has to be substantially different and approved by the planning board. Now, I'm concerned that I hear about this, because I don't know the answer here.
Right.
What was presented and what wasn't. And I would suggest at this point that you find out and continue. I want to know whether they're supposed to be here or not.
Yeah, because they're supposedly made a decision that this is substantially different in point twelve to eleven.
If it is, it is. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't think we have appropriate communication between planning and zoning.
Because we had this issue before.
Amy was the one.
Amy said, you can't bring this in front of us again. We've already denied it. And this was a different project.
Yep.
And it had to go back to the board, the planning board. So when you brought that project to the planning board, it was what you presented us, correct?
No.
I'm talking about the other one, I'm talking about the other one.
No, the first one?
The first one we did together.
The other one on Bedford Street.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about the, another project.
Talking about the other one. You actually brought it to the board, and showed what you were going to do, then you brought it back to us.
Right.
All right, now, let's talk about-
This is a different project.
Let's talk about now, did you do the same thing?
It's a, this is a revised plan, but our proposal to the planning board was that we were eliminating the commercial use. If the board feels uncomfortable with this, we will go back to the planning board with this plan, get another vote of consent, and then come back to you if we want to continue this here.
Well, that is a question, though, did you show the board that presentation that you're showing us now?
No, it is, this is a different-looking building.
There's two buildings, sir.
Then, I'm sorry, sir, sir, sir. Then why are you bringing this in front of us when it's different from what you brought from the planning board?
First of all, I don't believe, for the record, I don't believe the statute applies in this manner. But we went, we followed the statute based on precedent.
Our lawyer said-
Yeah. And you heard me say I disagreed with her at the time, but that's okay, so we consented to that. Our proposal to the planning board was that we were changing it from having the mixed commercial and residential use. We were eliminating the commercial use, we were going 100% residential, all right? We had-
Two buildings out back.
We had nothing out front. We've had different iterations. We showed them what the current iteration was, we talked about eliminating the commercial use. If you're saying that would prevent us from continuing our iterations and trying-
We got a letter here from, we got a letter here from the planning board saying that they looked over your plans, and now you're telling me that you showed them a different plans? I mean, where does that leave us? I mean-
Actually, so I agree with all of that, except that I'm reading section 16, and it says, "No appeal or application petition which has been unfavorably or finally acted upon by a special permit granting or permitting authorities shall be acted favorably upon within two years after the date of the final unfavorable action." Okay, so we understand that. Unless the permit granting authority, or permit granting authority finds by unanimous vote of a board of three members, or by a vote of four members of a board of five members, or two-thirds of a vote of board members, more than five members, specific and material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based, and describes such changes in the record of its proceedings, and unless all but one of the members of the planning board consents thereto, and after notices given to the parties in the interest of the time and place of proceedings, when the question of such consent will be considered. Now, I'm not really very good at this, but it seems to me that you can go to the planning board and say, look, they denied this, we're going to do the change, these are the changes. and the planning board says, "Okay, well, those are changes to it," and then we agree that you should be allowed to come back to the zoning board, the permitting board, and you've come back with these changes.
Significant.
No, no, that's wrong. The planning board has to just consent for us to return. The zoning board, if you approve the revised plan, has to have, list the specific material changes and conditions upon which the unfavorable action was based, and describe how the changes are now implemented here. The planning board just consents to the return within two years. They don't approve the plan, and, 'cause as I stated earlier, we have to submit site plan approval, site plan application to them for approval, that's a whole nother public hearing. They have not had a public hearing about this plan. They just voted to consent to allow us to come back, to submit a new project that we think is, has specific material changes and conditions.
I don't have it in front of me, but that's supposed to be substantial.
I have it right here.
I have, I'll give you a pause.
Eat women.
It's oddly written, though, in that it says, "The specific material changes in the condition..."
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
I've underlined zoning board's wording, and I've underlined the planning board's wording. In this, in this, this is the statute.
So you're going to have to, so the voting members are gonna have to find specific material changes in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based.
Right, and what I would submit to you is what I've printed, added on to this, that there are at least three that I can demonstrate to you. One, the new plan no longer proposes construction of any buildings at the rear of the property. That was noted as a big issue with our prior hearing. Two, the new plan no longer proposes the construction of more than one building on a lot. That was a variance that was denied. Three, no, the new plan no longer proposes both a commercial use and a residential use on the same lot, only a residential use is proposed. That is another specific material change. Those are things that you guys have to determine, not the planning board. The planning board just simply votes to consent to allow us to come back with what, with a plan that we think the zoning board would qualify under this, and could approve.
But in that letter that we have right there, it says they reviewed it. They reviewed what?
They reviewed, we gave them...
They reviewed that plan?
No, not this one here, they had, we had the buildings out back, we told them we're getting rid of the commercial. I don't think we need to do this, but if you feel better, and I'll go back.
I'm just saying that that's, I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't know.
It's written... There's the statute, right here in front of me.
The statute's written in a way that how is the, the planning board giving, they're giving consent after we determine the material changes.
No.
I mean, they're the last paragraph, and unless all of the members...
It is, this is a poorly written statute, I would, I would agree with you.
Marshals get to...
The last sentence, excuse me.
The members' specific and material changes in the conditions on which the previous unfavorable action was based, and described such changes in the record of the proceedings, and that's what they're voting on.
The zoning board.
The planning board.
No, that's not correct.
That's, I believe, is...
'Cause the special grant...
...the finding by the granting authority.
Right.
You're right. Planning board consent, no, that's what it says right here, planning board consent.
The only time the planning board...
Unless all but one of the members of the planning board continues thereto, and after given notice of the parties' interest, that at such time and place of proceedings, when the question of such consent will be considered.
That's the limit of the planning board's...
That is the petitions from the, that's planning board.
That's the only mention of it.
They should have a record of what was, why it was denied, and then know what is new, that it's substantial.
No, they don't have to do the substantial part, these guys do. They have to consent that what we're doing...
They can go back, but then you gotta show them what it is that you're changing. Here, we had this, now we're proposing this, this is way different, and they have to say, "Okay, go back to it."
Alright, what does the board wanna do?
We did show them that we were eliminating the commercial.
Did you wanna say something?
No, I was just saying that it's extremely oddly written.
Yeah. I mean, I suppose, I mean, I have to say to Mr. Riley that I'm not too sure what the planning board is supposed to do, I think they just have to consent for you to go back, they say you've made changes, and to go back. But factually, you know, you have a town member here who pays taxes, who said that, you know, the plan that was shown to the planning board was different, and, you know, you agree because it's an evolving thing, that it was different, and so we've gotta wonder, did the planning board have this in mind when they told us to go back? I was at, I think this is pertinent, I was at the meeting that they have a signed by-law meeting with the selectmen and the zoning and planning, and we were, you know, invited, not, not to do the meeting, but we were actually there, invited to go, and so I went, and I heard the planning board lament that whatever they do in the changes of zoning law, the zoning board of appeals always lets everything pass.
Mr. Riley said that.
So, 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 here, I mean, here maybe we should ask, before we make a decision, should we ask the planning board why they feel it should come back to us? Do you think?
The planning board meets on April 2nd. If the board would like, I will bring this plan to the planning board and ask them to vote, or to give consent or not give consent, they can do what they'd like.
I'm just, for the record, I'm just reading the Department of Housing Community Development Guidelines on, on Chapter 40A, and it says that the language of Chapter 40A, Section 16, leaves it unclear whether the planning board's function is simply to approve reconsideration by a planning board, zoning board of appeals, or to endorse favorable action. It is a form of which appears likely the board of appeals could not even consider the merits of the repetitive petition until the planning board approved. The planning board gives notice to the parties and interests of the time and place of the proceedings where the board will consider the question of consenting to a repetitive petition. At the public meeting, it is assumed that the planning board would consider whether the appellant or petitioner submitted sufficient information that could lead to a finding that there has been specific and material change in the conditions upon which the previous unfavorable action was based. So I mean, that's, from what I'm reading, that's saying that they're, they have to make a determination whether there's sufficient information...
And they sent us a letter saying they did.
Right.
But they had a...
We were eliminating the commercial use.
Prior, they had a, a different plan, is what I think.
It was a different plan, now it's different, again.
I mean, I'm... No, no, I, I, I know the statute, and, again, I would submit to you that Section 16 prevents repeated petitions of the same project, and if you, within two years. You can submit the same project after two years passes. If you wanna submit it within two years, you, the planning board has to grant consent, and you have to show what has changed the conditions. It could be the exact same site plan, the exact same building, but perhaps zoning changed, or stormwater regulations changed, some sort of conditions changed. In this, in this case, we're not submitting the same plan, we're submitting a completely different site plan with not two uses but one use, not multiple buildings but one building, it's a completely different project. I do not believe Section 40A 16 applies to that, 'cause we're not resubmitting the same project. However, town council has said, in the utmost of caution, go to the planning board and get the vote of consent, and then come here. If there's concern that they didn't see the plan that we submitted to you, I will, more than happy, we will go get that consent, and if they grant it, we will come back again. I would suggest we continue this hearing, if that's what the board wants to do.
What does the board wanna do? I wonder what you guys would like to do. Dennis?
Well, I think, I mean, I'm not too sure what the planning board really has to do other than consent change, but, but in actual fact, because it's been raised by the public that, you know, this is a totally different plan, you know, I, I think Mr. Riley's suggestion of going back to the planning board and having them have a look at this plan as before, and see what you think, I think that it doesn't away make sense, insofar as, this is where, you know, normally you go before the zoning board, and we say, "Well, we have problems with this," and they withdraw it and change it. Or, this is a kind of a catch-all, where they still wanna go forward, the zoning board has denied it, and then the person said, "Well, you know what, I wanna incorporate the changes that the zoning board has decided," and so they go to the planning board, say, "I'm really gonna do those changes," and they come back in. I mean, it seems to me that's, it's a way of molding what is before us, but, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, at the very least, it's a good idea to continue it, if the, if the parties agree.
I do, because I don't like the fact that two different things were said and shown to me. That's a big question of ethics and being upfront about everything, so...
Andrew?
Wait, okay.
Well, just a little...
Yeah, that's okay.
Andrew?
Sure, no, I mean, yeah, I think in the utmost of caution, it would probably make sense, just to resubmit it to the planning board, so that we're all on the same page as to what the plan is.
The plan is, of course, being shown.
Who are the voting members?
The three of us.
The three of you, yes, okay, thanks.
Do you wanna continue it for...
I'd rather, I'd rather just vote on it, but being outnumbered here, so, yes, we will, if that's what you wanna do.
In the abundance of caution, I think, I don't want Mr. Doughty or anyone to think that there was any sort of...
Well, I mean, you know...
No, let's do it, I would rather, if you mind.
We, we read it, you know, we did get a letter, and you already said, "No, this is not what we're showing them." So, so, just be cautious, I mean, our lawyer says, our lawyer says it should be done this way, and we do agree with her.
No, for the record, we took the buildings out of the back of the property at, at the board and the butters', you know, request, they did not want anything else built up back.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too. It's gonna die slowly, huh?
I see.
Did you...
Yeah, so we continue to next meeting, and we have...
Did you get all that, Nancy?
April 12th.
Thank you, gentlemen, and we, I will ask to be put on the...
Yes, we have to make a motion, thank you. I'm just thinking, April 12th.
Sorry.
Put it in my hand, now. Alright, so we need to make a motion?
So can, can I make a motion? 'Cause I'm not a voting member, so it has to be you.
No.
No.
No, I make a motion, then we can continue this meeting so that they can go in front of the planning board and get a clear answer from them, and come back to us.
It's just a motion to continue until, uh, April 12th?
April 12th, maybe.
And, do I, do you have to make a decision then about what are, how it differs?
No, not till then.
The 12th, April 12th it is. All favor?
I second.
Aye. Aye. Sure.
Aye.
Aye, everyone, aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. There'll be no subsequent notice on this, this is the only notice together.
Right.
It's not tenured. No, we just...
Please.
Which zoning bylaw can we review now?
I, I just looked up my computer.
Oh, the package that was submitted, okay.
I just looked up the legislator, the mass legislator doc for the zoning today.
What section?
Oh, you mean, we're talking about, now, next meeting. This is yours, Sean. Sean gonna be here?
I'm sorry, Dennis. I just, you really took my nap right inside, maybe...
No.
No, that's okay.
That's mine, is it? Is that Mike? That's yours, yeah.
Do you wanna take a minute?
Yeah, I get a little bit of boys, you know, drank too much water. I apologize. Because of you, I'm gonna go home and have a drink.
Why, did I just, did I just...
I'm looking at my...
Are we still, uh...
We're still live.
We're still live.
Hey, wanna talk, come with me.
I get a little boys, you know, excuse me?
Yeah, I got a good thing.
Dennis, did you make that lecture?
Yes, it was fantastic.
Was it good?
It was really good, and he's coming back in a week or two's time to talk about the, the kid that was stolen, you know, the...
Lindbergh?
Lindbergh baby, and all about the history of that time, and they're doing Agatha Christie, the merger on the Orient Express, which is actually, you know, to borrow the story of the, the context is the Lindbergh kidnapping, you know, for that, I mean, that's the story, it's different names, but same story. He's a terrific speaker.
He teaches at what, Bridgewater, you said?
I think so, I, I'm sure he still teaches there, he might be, but he did, you know, I think it's Bridgewater, Bridgewater, um, Mouse, U-Mouse, I think it's Bridgewater, but he's very, very good. You would like him. He's kind of brought everything together.
Well, that sounds cool.
You know, he talks without notes, and he just kind of gives you, and he has, so one, he actually says in his speeches, it's actually, he only has a few sentences that he keeps repeating all the time, and, you know, it's kinda like an onion, and just like a great speaker. You know, reminds me of some of the history lectures I used to sit at at home, you know, he's very, very good. You would've liked him.
Yeah, should check that out.
I'm reading just my accent, just so I'm looking for something to read, I'm reading a book about D-Day by a guy called Beaver, B-E-V-O-L, have you heard of him?
No.
Actually, really cool, and he talks from the German side, and the, you know, the Allies side, and, you know, all their worries, and it's very easy to read, you know.
I just started that, uh, I was looking for something kind of breezy to read, that James Patterson book about Aaron Hernandez, yeah?
Which one, Aaron Hernandez? Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's actually not as quick as I thought it would be, no, it's pretty small.
Is, is this, how do we turn this off? A push?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's a little bit dry on you, so, but...
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to you, I'll tell you about it after.
It's ridiculous, yeah.
It's funny.
So what do we have left, just a review of the M?
Yeah, we're just gonna go over it, um...
Yes. Exactly. It's Saturday, it's Saturday, it's Saturday.
Hold on, I want to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Liam.
Good night.
Alright, good night.
I'm going. They were, I wasn't, I, I didn't work.
Yeah.
I worked, I worked weekends. Seventy runs, around time. Fire.
They mentioned the marijuana dispensaries here.
Yeah, I do, I do.
And, at that meeting, that, with the planning board and selectmen, the planning board were actually gonna suggest that there would be a whole area where you could have a planning dispensary, it was actually from Rockland all the way to Brockton, all around 123, off mine, following 123, and so one of them, Mr. President, did say, you know, that's where residential is, you know, so they said, "Well, we could..."
I'll talk to you.
"...take away residential."
I'll do what.
But, but I thought it was, you know, and, and somebody else, selectmen thought it was too, that it was industrial areas that they were gonna, that, that they were originally doing it.
Have you started?
What's that?
We're waiting on Marshall.
No, Marshall's leaving.
Oh, he is? Well, his stuff is here.
I thought, uh, so...
Then he went outside.
I think he went just for a break, probably smoked something, and then Sean Riley is here, is he gonna sit in?
Well, he's probably talking to his customers. I suggest we...
Technically, we could go over if we wanted to.
Yeah, let's go through it.
Yeah. So, we're just gonna start, again, this is just a conversation about changes in the zoning bylaws.
Proposed by...
Attorney Sean Riley. So what we wanna talk about, the mud use, the mud, what is it, Muppet?
That's what he calls it.
Special premise. Yeah, that's right, Bill, did, I don't know if you wanna mention this into the record for, for Bill. I don't think, does Marshall have to be here for this one?
Pardon?
Does Marshall have to be here for that?
You want me to read this in?
Sure, why not?
Alright, so Section 175 for building, so, can, Section 175 for building concern, I'm concerned with the wording that it says, "Whether portable or fixed, having a roof built to form a structure that is safe and stable, supported by columns and walls, resting on its foundation for shelter, housing, for enclosure of persons, animals, awnings, or any similar cover, whether or not permanent in nature." My concern with this is that the case we heard a few years ago with the netting that was over an animal pen, and the component of the netting created a structure or a building, and therefore needed to be offline, and the wording on this is clear to allow for things, it's gonna open that case back up, and we'd have to revisit it. So basically, I think that goes to the proposal by, was that Marshall for the new Section 175?
No.
Marshall, did you get this from Bill?
Yeah, well, today.
Today, great.
Yeah. And that's in regards to the swimming pool.
Yeah, I remember that case.
Yeah, that's Mr., the guy that goes around with the animals, shows them at schools and stuff like that.
Oh, the, is it critters or what is it?
Yes, Critter Joe, I think, or something like that. Joe's Critters.
Oh, he's the animal officer.
Is he?
Is he? No, 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 I didn't even know we had an animal officer.
Wait, let's know then.
Crazy Joe's Critters.
Yeah, okay.
Joe's Crazy Critters? So he's not crazy, the critters are?
He came in front of the board, with a little butter...
Butter issues. You wanna just take that into consideration, Marshall, or...
That case dealt with... For chickens, I think it was, and they put, they, there had been some bird netting put over it to protect predatory birds from attacking the chickens, and they were alleging that the structure, the pen, became a building because the netting was put over it, and the decision was that it did not, because if it became a building, then it's subject to setbacks, and the fencing for the chickens was not, is allowed up right up to the sideline, and I think the correct decision was made then, and I'm not certain whether or not he had, Mr. Mullen has putting together, there was something, some, something, I think, proposed, and I don't remember.
Do you wanna talk to him about it? Do you want to talk to him about it?
What's that?
You want to talk to Bill about it?
Might not have time, though.
Well, I don't think this part is a problem. The other part, and I don't remember whether it was submitted, because I don't have it with me, was for carports. And was that submitted? Because I was concerned that a building, it was? Oh, then if that was submitted-
I'm pretty sure you had three of them.
Then we're okay. If the carport one was in there, I don't-
That's one with the swimming pool, and you were concerned with-
Swimming pool definition, and but building, carports had to be included in, to be a building, because buildings, it said that you have to have walls to be a building. And carport clearly doesn't have walls. Therefore, it's a structure, not a building, and it's not subject to setbacks. So possibly, you could have somebody wants to put a carport right on the front yard line and park a vehicle under it.
We approved that one and moved it on.
Okay, so, and this structure, building, and netting, roofing does not- Does not create a building because you have netting over it.
So that one, I don't think the next one has any concern with your proposals. The bottom paragraph, basically, the Whitman and the-
No, that doesn't have to do with something I've taken-
So we should bring that up when we-
Okay. What do we actually have to do, Mr. Chairman, here on the zoning board?
Well, we just want to take a little time and go over what, the package that has been given to us by Sean Roden.
I think the fun of this is-
Did anyone get a chance to go over it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the fun about this, being on the zoning board of appeals, is recognizing the cases that are mentioned in it. So, you know, Mr. Mullen had that case, the technology case, do you remember that?
Yes.
Poor Chaps that wanted the, to put their trucks on the technology district. That would, the changes here would change that decision.
Right.
But I also, I mean, so instead of these changes, we could have instead the entitlement of, you know, entitled these changes as the cases, what the changes are. But I was actually concerned with the parking issues, because there's a very big project that's going, which I don't think is going to come before us at all, except for maybe parking, which is in North Abington. As I say, that's where I live, whether changing the, a big white factory-
New England art?
New England art into an apartment block. And I think the only issue that will come before the zoning board is parking, which of course is a big issue there. So I was wondering, do the changes here change that at all?
So those guys don't do their projects?
Because that's a big project that's, you know, we don't see, but it's definitely will change a lot of Abington.
I mean, my opinion generally is, I guess I don't particularly have one. I mean, I think this is something that should be left up to potentially the planning board and the voters. I mean, I don't know that it's really, for me to weigh in on whether or not-
That's what I mean, too.
I think, you know, a Muppet district should be, because then it almost looks like if these go through, that I was against the idea that there should be a special permit for this or that. It's just, whatever you want to do, then we'll just determine it.
But over the years, just so you know, they normally come in front of us, then they go to the planning board, and from the planning, they also go to the selectmen, and so they do get vetted all the way, which is, show if there's some ideas in there that are or not. Because I'm not keen on changing the technology business. I think that's not the right decision, because we're basically going, we could have, the reason it got defeated in the first place was because of wanting to put in the berry, wanted to put in the trash thing. And now, we, by changing this, they could break back saying, yep, I want to do it.
There is a possibility. Well?
Same restrictions still, I didn't change that at all.
Well, it's concerned, because the gentleman we turned down, I know has bought some property there, so we'll see him. And that's another way, changing things, so they come back in front of the board. I guess concerned about that. Some of these are some good changes, but that particular one, I'm personally against changing that district, because it was a big reason to get rid of it. I think we're taking, potentially, with the work that's being done at Union Point, and Union Point now is trying to attract two big businesses in the paper this week. And we could be getting some of their overflow if Union Point takes off like it appears to be going to be doing, that we could be giving up some potential work there, or businesses. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say something that I agree with Andrew, that I'm a little uncomfortable about making any decisions about, you know, saying whether we don't agree or we agree to some of these things. Because, you know, whatever the people at the town meeting will decide, will actually come before us, and we have to make decisions. So that's why I was saying, what do we actually do here?
There is one question, I mean, a lot of these, these things do, going to be changing how we-
Well, yes.
-want to certain things.
That's right. And they are cases, but maybe that's how-
There's a new proposal for a business development area.
Yes. Yes. So we know what's, we know what's coming before us, right? We know what's going to come before us if they have areas. But maybe that's how bylaws change. Maybe that's it, that they come before, I mean-
What I think this board should do is go over it, and maybe next meeting, we should say if we support it or not. Because I've gone to town meetings where we have been told that we supported something and we didn't, as a board.
Absolutely correct.
And I think that we really should look at this. I'm not saying we should change anything. We should just say if we agree with it or not, that's all. That's all we need to say.
And there could be some questions in here that we as a board have, that sometimes we wondered if this was better defined or something, or if it is what we thought was well-defined before now changes. And it's very confusing when one year it's approved, this section is okay, this highway commercial, then it's this way, then it's that way. I just don't get that. That's my opinion. Again, I'd like to see a lot more structure, and again, the ability to change that makes sense for the town. Again, we're trying, these are the laws for the town that I think is what we should be concerned with and doing best for Abington.
Sure, go right ahead, Jim.
Sean Riley, some of the things that you, you're talking about are some things that I drafted. And as John kind of alluded to, the procedure to change a zoning bylaw in any town in Massachusetts is to submit a town meeting article to the selectmen, who then forward it to the planning board, and the planning board has the public hearing. And the planning board, they then makes a recommendation at town meeting, and then town meeting votes yes or no. Because of the past, where things were submitted that affected zoning, that there was confusion as to whether you guys knew about it or didn't, the board, it wasn't all of you guys at the time. Frankly, as a courtesy, when I submitted it to the planning board for review, I wanted to send it to you, so that if you wanted to offer your comments at the planning board's hearing, or prior to the hearing, great. If the board would rather take a hands-off attitude, fine. But I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that these things were being submitted, so nothing was going on, you know, behind your back, no bait and switch, or whatever type of thing. Okay?
It's just a lot of changes, and I mean-
These are some things that have kind of been accumulating over the years. And, you know, even as town moderator and as a practicing zoning attorney, we don't, it's tough when you make like one change every year, and you have to keep updating the thing. So we've been kind of making a list of things that have been a problem. Like the driveway issue has always been outdated, vague section that we needed to change. So we put it together, we drafted it, bounced it off a few people, and now it's hopefully a little more clear for residential driveways, here's the rules, for commercial driveways, here's the rules. And this town, I mean, it happened in Quincy, people started paving their front yards.
Right, yeah.
And there was nothing the town could do to stop it.
Saw that in there, yeah.
Yeah, the only thing we can do right now is under lot coverage, but a lot of times it doesn't trigger lot coverage, depending on the size of the lot. So now there's a proposal that there'd be a limitation, that you have to have some green grass, and not just all pavement.
Just pave the whole front yard.
If there's a unique reason why you need to have a little extra pavement, then come to the zoning board and explain, get the special permit or whatever.
Having said that, Waymouth is doing a big change on Route 18 and Main Street, Washington Street. So the businesses are more structured, that can be allowed in, so it doesn't look like a mishmash. And housing, they don't want big housing because of the traffic, they're limiting them to multi-house, like two or three apart houses. That's what their intent is along, I've got that article at home, I see.
The Muppet changes and the general commercial change. Not the general commercial, what is it, central business?
No, the Business Development District.
Yeah, that, no, that's general-
Oh, general commercial.
General commercial, that's going to be changed too, right? That's in here too?
Yeah, general commercial, there's only one small strip of general commercial in town of Abington. It's up-
By the other way?
No, well, yeah, across the street from the Colony House, that area. Frankly, I believe in 2003, when we did the whole zoning map, they forgot about it. Because all of the changes that were made didn't do anything to general commercial, but that little strip was left there. So it goes, you know, highway commercial, or it's just, that's the only part of town that it's general commercial. So I'm not sure who mentioned it earlier, the proposal for business develop, oh, Bill did it in his email. The proposal for business development, originally we talked about just for the transit, technology business area, which is basically like north of Sorellas, on Route 18 and the back part of Adam Street. What it does basically is take away, makes it harder to put in multifamily housing, and makes it easier to put in business. We put in additional language to say, if you like this on Route 18 up there, do you want to also consider on the southern part of Route 18? If the planning board or the town doesn't want it, it's very easy to delete those sections and just leave it north.
I mean, the technology district-based district, that was fought for hard. That was, that was, that was a lot of time and money and effort through the town to create this.
And it's not a, it's not a negative change to that, in my opinion. The reason technology business went in was to try to stop the transfer station. And so they changed the zone, right? In reality, that wouldn't have affected it, because the permit was already issued. But over time, the permit dissolved, so then we were left with the technology business district, intended to attract Apple and Amazon to come to Route 18 in Abington. Hasn't happened in the 14 years it's been there. So we tried to update the bylaw to, again, allow certain types of businesses that we'd like to see in that part of town, and also make it harder to convert any open property to residential uses.
It would allow the chap who came before us to open up his business there, wouldn't it?
The landscaping?
The landscaping. It allows for like open storage, I don't know what permits he asked for. Like it allows for an office as of right.
But it still, it shows that piece there where it still doesn't allow storage of-
Hazardous.
Or, or, what was the word?
The transfer station is not allowed.
Something about trees or something. So there was something in here. It took my mind-
And again, if there's something, you know, if there's a particular item on that proposed use chart that you think should be changed, then by all means, please go to the hearing, I think they're doing it on April 2nd at the planning board. Because the procedure through town meeting, and I'll step down as moderator at this time, because I've been help, trying to help with the wording of this, but the procedure would be to, the planning board will make a motion, either to present this as it's written, or with the following amendments. And those amendments would come out of the public hearing. So again, if you have any issues that you'd like to make something better, by all means. The driveway issue, again, I think it tries to clarify some things.
What about the, so the Whitman, where, you know, the side between Abington and Whitman, you're changing that from residential to commercial. And that speaks of a case that was before us, where actually the neighbors were here and said there's flooding. And I actually drove past that recently, and there is quite a lot of houses. Now, actually, we did actually, you came back and we changed the project, because the project had narrowed down and got more focused, and we did actually allow it. But I mean, that is a place where people who live on that line, the Whitman-Abington line, are going to see that what was residential, what they thought was going to be residential, the town, other townspeople are going to vote now to do commercial, and there's going to be more construction in that area.
Yeah, the thought was, what do you envision Route 18 to be in the future? Right now, a lot of that area down there is zone, is R30 for single-family housing. Frankly, it's going to be hard to sell your single-family home on Route 18, as Route 18 becomes busier and busier, especially when the airbase gets developed. It is, Route 18 being a highway commercial, well, being a highway, may be more of an area where a business would want to locate. Again, this is a, this is a proposal to go to the public hearing. So the planning board itself may say, let's not tinker with that area of town, we'll only talk about the northern part of town. I just have it written both ways, and if you saw, I kind of bifurcated it, so they could just delete section B, or whatever it is, and a few others.
I mean, there are changes, but there are not major changes. I mean, when you look at the different proposals here, I mean-
Yeah, it still allows computer companies-
Almost in there. I mean, some changes like open storage of transportation vehicles and trailers, that's in the Muppet.
You know, like, I think everyone would like to see restaurants, you know, move in.
A little surprising about the marijuana dispensary.
That's already in there.
Well, it was no, originally, in the Muppet.
And I think the planning board is, they have to come up with a marijuana bylaw for the retail sale. The town, the town approved it?
No, they can turn that down.
I thought they turned it down.
The town approved it.
I know, but they still could turn it down.
The town meeting can.
Yes.
They're coming up with a bylaw of where should it go? And that, I think, is being discussed on April 2nd also, town council's helping to write it. And, you know, the town meeting could approve it wherever they're proposing it go, or if they deny it, and I think there's all procedure you have to go through. It's somewhat confusing, hopefully we'll be able to iron it out. But-
It's just kind of some weird stuff here, like printing, and bottled beverages, and plumbing, electrical, I mean, there are some changes, I mean-
We're talking, you know, microbreweries are now kind of popular in different towns, you know? We have one in Abington Center. What would be wrong with a microbrewery on Route 18 in that part of town? Why not? That's probably a good location.
What part of town are you talking about?
I'm talking about the northern section of Route 18 in the business development district. That's what is now the technology business.
Well, that's not, this is for the-
When you said bottling-
What is it, what is it, Muppet?
Muppet, yeah.
Muppet. This is for the Muppet.
Oh, for Muppet, yeah. The Muppet district is only in the area, well, I think you-
Well, there's two right here, I have it actually right here. And one's over by Chestnut Street, and the one's in that corner of the airbase, correct?
Which now kind of has their own zoning thing over there. Yeah, but yes, that's the only area of town where the Muppet is. But as I noted, right now, there's nothing allowed as of writing the Muppet, other than churches, daycare, and farms. So, you know-
Well, you get the store, we, there's a development going in there now, right?
Yeah, but we can't rent or sell to anybody until we get a special permit or a variance for any one of the uses, which is strange. So we started going through, all right, what kind of businesses would you want? Would you want a carpenter to be able to have, you know, have a rent-a-bay there? Sure, that's kind of harmless in that part of town, so-
So that's, that's where this comes in too, with the-
Yeah, it allows certain uses-
It'll open up the development that's going in there to-
To encourage commercial development in that area, which is-
Well, it's going in. We already know that's going in, correct?
It hasn't been approved, we're going through the planning board now.
Okay, all right. It's been approved by us, I think, right?
Yeah, yeah, yes, the main commercial development.
So, so that will give-
But nobody can move in there.
Okay, well, yeah, all right, yeah.
We, so we would have to then, once we know the planning board approved that project, and what we're talking about is a couple of buildings, commercial buildings, we would have to go look for tenants, who would be interested in going in there. And whatever they were, we'd have to go down the chart and say, do you need a permit? In every case, right now, you need either a special permit or a variance for any business to go in there, unless it's a church, daycare, or farm. So that's kind of crazy. How can a bank give a loan, and how can someone-
Yeah, I see how you could, that's why you'd want to open it up to, you know, fill those, fill those-
Yeah, we don't want gas stations. We're not going to have transfer stations.
Those are storage areas, from what I recall.
Yeah, basically, you know, it's like, your typical, you know, laborer, a plumber guy, or cabinet maker, or, you know, usually a small office warehouse, some people rent those areas to park their antique cars, you know, it's a secure building. But if there's something on the list that you think-
Well, one, one question might be, I suppose, that we could ask is, who is the permit-granting authority in these changes? It actually came up in the signed bylaw, the planning board had a problem, because it seemed like the zoning board was getting back its permit-granting. I don't think we really mind, you know, whether we get permit-granting or not, but in this, it seems like the planning board is the main permit-granting authority. Would that be right?
In the Muppet district, special permits are granted by the planning board, variances are granted by the zoning board. Any variance anywhere is granted by the zoning. The thought is that because, you know, we're trying to encourage commercial development, that necessitates a site plan review here with the planning board. So why not have the same hearing? They can discuss, well, what type of uses is it going to, what special permits do you want? So the neighbors and the planning board can have one large hearing to address those issues. If there's something that they want above and beyond, and they want a variance, they have to come to this board for that.
What about, I was just looking at parking lots where large trucks, trailers, and other major transportation, construction equipment are stored in a front yard and are visible, have to be screened by a fence. So the poor guys have to have a fence if they have their, you know, so we have to decide what is a large truck. But I see the permit-granting authority for that anyways, the planning board.
Yeah, the thought was, again, that if you're going to have a, you know, a yard, Yeah, the thought was, again, that if you're going to have a, you know, a, a yard, whether it's the DPW or a private contractor, we kind of wanted to encourage like development down the Cape. If you go down some of the roadways in the Cape, you see driveways going in, and you see evergreens. And you can't see, you, they require a vegetative buffer or some sort of buffer. And that's what we're trying to get to, too. We'll allow that type of, you know, if you want to park your landscape equipment up there, great. But we want to have a buffer so that people don't drive by and see landscape equipment. They come by and they see evergreens or trees or a fence or whatever. So again, we're trying to envision, what is, what do we want?
Who would that, who would that apply to? I mean, would that apply to the carpenter who has his truck out in the front?
What section were you looking at?
No, I was just looking at Page.
I saw that, but I, I took it differently than, what I see that is more of, guy's got a bunch of, the trailer, and he's got trucks that he takes.
Commercial.
Yeah, and he leaves them all there.
Proposed provisions.
And then it becomes a very messy situation, and it can look horrible. In some towns, that is a problem, and that's why they changed their laws.
But it wouldn't apply to just an ordinary guy, a carpenter, or a plumber, or electrician that have
Right, we're talking about large vehicles, you know, they're packing their bulldozer out front or whatever. If they're packing it out back, it's screened. But if it's packed out front, then you have to create screening.
And I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, it's just, we want the town to develop in a way that is aesthetically pleasing, but we don't want to make it difficult for business. So we try to give them a list of, this is what we expect.
Yeah.
We would encourage, you know
It's encouraging, it's, it's only good for the town, you know, otherwise.
Right. And, you know, if, we'd love to have a bunch of offices, office buildings on Route 18. Right now, there's no real demand for that in Abington.
Yes.
Will that happen 10 or 15 years from now? I don't know, but at least right now, we, we don't try to, it doesn't slow them down. We allow that. We'd love to see that.
So in here, you have trucking and heavy equipment repair shops providing all workers carried out within the building. And that's a yes for business development.
That's basically what's up there now with the trucking terminal. They, they have, you know, they repair their trucks, they actually have a gas pump up there.
That was probably grandfathered in anyway, right?
Way.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in fact, they, they were at one of the planning board meetings where we talked about this, you know, in a general sense. And, and some of the owners up there wanted that to be allowed as a right. And I did not, I thought it should be special permit because the town, I think, should have say in that type of use if it's up there. But we're not denying it from being up there because it is on a highway and you don't want, that's where you'd want the trucks to be. I'm not saying that any of these businesses are going to come into Abington, but if they do
Glad we talked about it because it, it brings the light that, you know, we had an idea where you're going with it.
Yeah, I'm not trying to make it easy to bring in businesses that we, you know, we kind of don't want, or that are kind of hazardous or smell or create issues. But if you see something there that does concern you, then
For that meeting.
Yeah, April 2nd, I believe it's going to be, there's a couple other things the planning board was, was suggesting. I know Marshall has a few things that you guys were just talking about.
Yeah.
I just like the stuff as I see them when I have a problem with them.
Right.
Be making decisions on what bylaws are
Right, exactly.
For me, I don't think that I enforce whatever it is that is decided upon by the town, that's the end of my job.
Right.
Yep. And I appreciate your time here because it does, it does explain some of the things.
Yeah, I mean, Marshall's job sometimes is difficult when we have really old and vague language, like the driveway language. We're talking about waving.
I run into some difficulty. And like, and I put in input when I have stuff like the carpets.
Yeah, right.
And it says you can, I can't tell you can't do.
No zoning bylaw is perfect?
No.
Never?
You have some that are better than others.
Yeah.
It's been challenging, but the only time I have input is when I specifically run into something where, boy, there's a problem.
But one, if
And that's the only time I give any input to you guys.
I think
Other than that
Yep.
When I'm Action planning and whatever is voted by the town, I enforce whatever the town
And the reason I submitted this to you and to the planning board was to hope that both groups would be on board with whatever gets proposed at town meeting. That if, if they go through the hearing, the planning board says this, but the zoning board's against it, it's probably going to be an issue at town meeting. But if, if the hearing that you, you know, you guys felt like you brought up whatever concerns you might have had as an, as a resident or as a member, great. More import, the better. And I hope, you know, I'm sure there's going to be some business owners and some property owners who'll come, go to that hearing too. And it's a two-thirds vote, so it has to be, you know, the overwhelming majority of people to approve it. I just think we need to make some changes to get ready for what we want in this town. Try to keep out the things we don't, but welcome the ones that we do. That's the intent.
Let me add one then. I think it's probably the worst thing I've ever seen in this town existing traffic while I was driving is the one by the old school in the New England Art near that intersection with those shrub that people have there. You have to inch yourself, inch, 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 and you sit there and say, please, nobody come.
Nobody is.
That is, and I'm surprised no one is
There is a bylaw about that.
But no one's done anything about it, and that
The hedges get too high. The hedges should be cut down lower.
Or eliminated sightline because it's, it's dangerous, it's, I'm surprised the police department hasn't, because that is very scary. And I don't, as I'm getting older, that is not a place I'm going to go. I'm going to go where it's safe.
Well, I think it's one of the worst intersections in Massachusetts, isn't it?
They said it's the fifth.
Fifth, in Massachusetts.
Was it, no.
All right, so
There's one around there, I'm sure.
We are doing a road safety audit of that intersection as part of the new development proposal we offered to pay for that. So they are going to, and I'm sure that's going to be on the list, is, and I don't know who the property owner is, but the, the shrubs are too high. And there is a bylaw that says you draw a line.
I don't even, I think they could be a foot and it'd be too high.
Yeah.
Because it is, they inch way out.
That's true. You're right.
So
Okay, so we do appreciate your time.
I appreciate your time, yeah.
Thanks, Sean.
We're all set? We're good?
Yep.
Anything else you want to speak of, or?
Waiting.
No.
All right.
Just on, on one thing, that I agree with Andrew, that really the zoning board, I'm not sure if we can actually back any idea because we're regulatory like, like Marshall, you know, but as ordinary citizens. And of course, we, we recognize all the cases that are mentioned in those because those are done by business bringing changes here.